Good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Kettering City Council. Today's date is July 9, 2024. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Please bow your heads. Thank you for all who serve this community. Give us enthusiasm for our work and wisdom to make the right decisions. May our work be meaningful as we work together. Guide this council so that we may continue to serve our citizens with integrity, wisdom, and purpose, always remembering to be worthy of these responsibilities entrusted in us by our residents. I'd like to recognize Miami Valley Communication Council TV operator, Mike Zaprone. Mike, thank you for your assistance. And I would like to call on Mrs. Fisher at this point for a motion to approve the minutes.
Your Honor, I have reviewed both the council and workshop minutes for June 25. I do find them in order, and I move for their approval.
Second.
Okay, the motion has been moved in second. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes. Okay. We have two proclamations this evening. The first one is for Parks and Recreation Month. Mr. Sudditt, are you going to read that one for us?
I have it, Mayor, right here.
Okay.
As a, I will start by saying, as a former parks rec professional, undergraduate degree in parks rec management, it's my honor to have this proclamation this evening. The proclamation reads, whereas parks recreation departments are an integral part of our community and part of communities throughout this country, and whereas parks recreation improves the quality of life for our citizens by building a healthy, active, and connected community, and whereas parks recreation contributes to the economic and environmental well-being of our community and region and provides a place for children and adults to connect with nature and each other, and whereas parks recreation creates family traditions that are passed down from generation to generation and create treasured memories, and whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and whereas Kettering, Ohio recognizes the health, societal, environmental benefits derived from parks and recreation, therefore, on behalf of Peggy Lehner, Mayor of the city of Kettering, and on behalf of the city council and the community, do hereby proclaim July 2024 to be Parks and Recreation Month in the city of Kettering.
Okay. Thank you. Well done. I think that's going to be received by Shawna. You think it's well. Yeah. Welcome.
Thank you. Everyone, I'm Shawna Llewellyn, the Recreation Superintendent for the city. So obviously, I work in the city, but I also live here, and I'm raising my family here. And we talk a lot about why this is an amazing place to live and why we are so glad this is where we ended up, and there's a lot of them. But since it's July, I thought maybe I would just focus on one of them. If you look across our region and our state and even our country, you would be hard-pressed to find a Parks and Recreation and Cultural Arts Department for a community our size that has the amenities, the services, the programs, the events, the spaces and places that we're able to offer our community. And so I am here on behalf of our department to say thank you to our community, to our elected officials, to our city leadership for the support and the value that you see in what we do. So thank you for the proclamation, and thank you for celebrating our favorite month, Parks and Recreation Month.
Excellent. Thanks, LaShawna. Okay. We're glad you chose to live here as well as work. I'd like to call on Mrs. Fisher at this point to read a proclamation for Sister City Youth Exchange Program Day. Before she does that, however, I want to personally welcome all of the students who are here from Austria, from Steyr. I believe you're all Steyr, aren't you? Yeah. I know we went last year, a number of us went to your city and just had a wonderful, wonderful time. And so we hope you have half as much fun as we did visiting you. With that, take it away, Jackie.
Ma'am, I do have a proclamation. Whereas the Kettering City Council establishes the Kettering Sister Cities Committee in 1967 with the mission of formulating and developing plans for an active cultural exchange between Kettering and a foreign city. And whereas the committee researched cities around the world and recommended the city of Steyr, Austria, to be the first sister city. And whereas the Kettering Sister Cities Committee held events and activities to promote cultural understanding of our sister city, including the famous Spasnoch and Austrian Festival, and also by participating in the Holiday at Home Parade. And whereas the committee sponsored professional work and teacher exchange as well as artistic exchanges when the civic band, children's choir, and youth ballet performed in both sister cities, and bands and artists from our sister cities performed in Kettering. And whereas the committee sponsored cultural exchanges between our cities, citizens and the citizens of Steyr, Austria, which were hosted by local families, which by the way, we very much appreciate, to help build relationships. And whereas the first student exchange between Kettering, Ohio and Steyr, Austria took place in 1976 and has continued since, and this year marks the 45th student exchange as we welcome the youth from Steyr. Glad you guys are here. And therefore, Peggy Lehner, our mayor of the Kettering, Ohio, of Kettering, Ohio, do hereby proclaim, all those words, July 9, which is today, to be the Sister City Youth Exchange Program Day in the city of Kettering, and urge all of our citizens to join the Kettering City Council on congratulating Kettering Sister Cities on its youth exchange program and wishing them continued success in promoting peace through mutual respect, understanding, and cooperation, one individual and one community at a time. Signed by our mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Al Follencamp is going to receive that, and you have a few words. And can I just warn you, because it'll give them just a second to think about it, when Al is done talking, I'm going to invite, see if any one of you wants to get up and just sort of give us a one-minute summary of what you've done since you arrived, or what your impressions are. You don't have to, but I'm going to ask if anyone's interested, so, warning. Al.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, let me introduce myself, Al Follencamp. I'm present chairman for the Kettering Sister Cities Board, and it's been a very busy couple of weeks here. First of all, I want to thank the city of Kettering, and especially the staff, and especially Brian, for serving at Spasnoch. Did a great job. And it was just a great event. And also, of course, picnic last night, where we had great support from the city out of Pollen Farm. It was just a wonderful opportunity. But enough on that. What I'd like to do is introduce the two brave chaperones who brought these students over and let them just say hello to you. And let me introduce them. It's Anna Sponring, who teaches middle school in Steyr, and also Lisa Carner, who is a computer teacher at the high school. So if you'd like to just say a word or two.
Okay. Hello, everyone. We are very honored to be here, to be part of this program. We are enjoying our time here, and we feel already as if this would be our second home, even if it's really far away from home. So thank you for having us and for showing the culture you have here. Thanks.
Thank you, Anna.
Yeah, I also want to say thank you for your hospitality, and we were very warmly welcomed, and we are proud to represent Steyr and Austria here in Kettering.
Okay. Thank you so much, both of you.
At this point, I know they've been very busy, but as you've extended the invitation, I will see if any Austrian student would love to get up here and tell them what's going on.
I know they're all saying, "Don't call on me."
Do we have volunteers? Well, I know they've been busy, so we won't put them on the spot unless they can draft someone.
How much longer do you have?
There's, I believe there's 12 students, and we have a volunteer who's going to tell you everything they've done so far.
To Sunday.
There you go.
There we go.
Okay, hello. So I just want to say thank you for your hospitality, too. Yeah, we arrived in America on the 30th of June in Washington, and then we were there for three days and got here, which we were warm, which we had a warm welcome from the host families, which we spent the 4th of July with, which was really cool and nice to see how different your party.
Party was?
Yeah, let's say party. Yeah, and we did so many things which are cool, because we don't have them. Like today, we went to the Air Force Museum, and then the police station, which was also really nice. We also saw a rodeo.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
In Washington, D.C.?
No, we're here. On Saturday, we watched it on Saturday.
Oh.
Yeah. I'm really looking forward to the next few days. Yeah, thank you.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
So at this point, traditionally, we have a photograph of the students with city council. If you'd like to do it now, or we can do it later.
We can do it right now. I want to do one other thing before we do it, and that's to recognize Sue, who I know does half the work in your house.
A little more than half.
A little more than half. I was hoping you'd say that.
Very nice.
Thanks. All right, and then...
Also, I'd like to recognize Joe Yupa, who you met last year over in Steyr, because he was chaperoning the American students going to Steyr last year, and has done a boatload of organizing for the students over here this year.
Yeah. Thanks. Thanks so much.
Thank you. At this time, if we could have the Austrian students and the chaperones come in.
They go in the front, we can stand in the back.
Stand by, that's the mayor.
Let's, you want to go down?
That's the pictures.
You're never going to grow a needle with wings, though.
Yeah, we need just to...
We're above that. Yeah, we're above. We're above.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I saw the picture of the... Thank you. For those of you who stayed sitting, are you host families? Host families, yeah.
Host families and host counterpart students.
Gotcha.
And at this point, they have chosen to stay for the entire meeting, so God bless.
Oh, wonderful. Great.
But thank you very much.
We appreciate that. Okay. All right. Well, thank you so much, and God bless you all. We have no public hearings this evening. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to address city council at this point, they may do so. This is only with comments on new leg, or new legislation, new information, I'm sorry, about the legislation on tonight's agenda. You may come down at this time. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. Speakers must state their name and address, and council, comment should be addressed to council. If you have comments that are not about the legislation on tonight's agenda, there will be an opportunity for those to be heard later in the meeting. Is there anyone wishes to address council at this point? Okay, not seeing anyone. We will then move along to ordinances and second reading. We have none. We have Mrs. Fisher. I'm going to call on you for the first resolution.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to submit an application to the Ohio Department of Transportation Municipal Bridge Program for the funding of the Galewood Street Bridge Project. It is city project number 03-928B. It is requested by Engineering Department, and I move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Mr. Bergstresser?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. As mentioned, this will allow the city to submit an application for funding for a rehabilitation project on the Galewood Street Bridge, which is a small bridge located in general vicinity of State Farm Park. The bridge recently became eligible for funding through this ODOT program. So if funds are awarded, the estimated timeframe for construction would be in the 2027, 2028 timeframe. Be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions? Call the roll.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution to declare the necessity and intention of acquiring property interests in project parcels 4-WD and 4-T of the MOT-West Loop Sidewalk Phase II, city project number 05-213F, ODOT project number 113340. The estimated cost and the amount budgeted is $3,430, and this is requested by the Engineering Department. I move for approval.
Second, Mr. Bergstresser.
Thank you, Your Honor. The acquisition of permanent and temporary right-of-way is required to construct a proposed sidewalk on the north side of West Loop Road from Stone Bridge Road to Ridgeway Road. Essentially, this is a Phase II project for the one that's currently under construction right now. If you've been on West Loop Road recently, you've noticed the construction of a rather large retaining wall. That is for the first phase of sidewalk construction. What we're asking for tonight is for right-of-way for a second phase. We have not been successful to obtain the right-of-way from one property owner, and therefore, to keep the project on schedule, we are requesting to begin the appropriation process. We have successfully obtained right-of-way from two other property owners within the project limits. Be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions? Okay. Let's go ahead and call the roll. Anyone have any questions? No? Okay. Call the roll.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution to amend Resolution 9912-17 regarding the approval of the petition for additional territories to the Energy Special Improvement District, and this is requested by the city manager's office. A move for approval.
Second.
Moved in second. Mr. Greeson?
Yes, Your Honor. This, this request of $31,140 continues our crisis intervention assistance program. As you are aware, the Crisis Intervention Specialist with South Community Behavioral Services spends time with Kettering Police Department officers responding to mental health-related calls for service, conducting follow-up contacts with at-risk individuals, and assisting professional placement of those needing assistance, as well as helping train KPD personnel on mental health-related topics. We recommend approval of this, and certainly I would invite the chief to add any context he would like to.
Just to thank South Community for their partnership, and to say that I've said many times before, this is one of the most successful programs I've ever seen in my 29 years in law enforcement, so very much appreciate the council's support as well. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Anybody have any questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, call the roll.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution to amend Resolution 9912-17 regarding the approval of the petition for additional territories to the Energy Special Improvement District, and this is requested by the city manager's office. A move for approval.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Greeson?
Yes, Your Honor. The city of Kettering is a member of the Port Authority, the Dayton-Mongomery County Port Authority Energy Special Improvement District. If you don't know what that is, they fund, they approve financing and bonds for PACE projects. PACE projects are property-assessed clean energy projects and other energy efficiency efforts. There is an interest by additional jurisdictions that are currently not part of the ESID, Energy Special Improvement District, to join. And under the rules, in order for that to occur, the current member jurisdictions must pass legislation to allow for expansion of the ESID. We certainly don't see any reason why more communities shouldn't be availing themselves of property-assessed clean energy and similar-type programs, and recommend approval.
Great.
Be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, call the roll.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes. Okay. We have no ordinances in first reading this evening. Do we have any certifications and petitions? Mrs. Hasler?
We do not have any certifications or petitions this evening.
Okay, thank you. At this point, I would like to call on our city manager for a city manager's report and community update.
Yes, Your Honor. Just want to remind everyone that to please take a moment and nominate your neighbor, a business, or yourself, or any Kettering resident you think is deserving of the Neighborhood Pride Award. Nominations are accepted online, where you can contact our volunteer administrator at the number on the screen. You can also find a submission form in the summer edition of Contact with Kettering, and the deadline for nominations for Neighborhood Pride Award is August 1. This is the time of year. We are always encouraging people to do block parties, so if you're thinking about planning a block party, we certainly encourage you to do so. It builds a sense of neighborhood pride and a great opportunity to celebrate holidays with your neighbors. When possible, representatives of police and fire stop by to say hello, and the Board of Community Relations provides certificates for ice cream. If you are interested in having a block party, visit the website or contact the Engineering Department at the number on the screen. We are also in the timeframe where we're looking for nominations for our Good Neighbor Award. If you have a neighbor whose efforts, both large and small, make your neighborhood and Kettering a place, better place to live, we want to, we want to have a nomination, and they'll be accepted through August 31 of 2024. There's a QR code on the screen. You can visit the website, and please nominate good neighbors of Kettering. There are all kinds of concerts, events, and festivals at the Fraser Pavilion in Lincoln Park this summer, but we did want to highlight that back by popular demand is the Kickin' Chicken Wing Fest, Saturday, July 13, 4:00 to 10:00 p.m.
Isn't that funny?
Because of the great work of our Parks Recreational and Cultural Arts Department and the hiring efforts of lifeguards, we've been able to offer extended hours at our water park, open until 7:00 p.m. weekdays. So if you see it on the screen, Monday through Saturday, noon to 7:00, Sunday, noon to 6:00, please take the opportunity while the weather is warm to enjoy our tremendous water park. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you. At this point, if you would like to come speak before city council, please come down to the podium. Each speaker will have a five-minute limit. Speakers are asked to state their name and address. Is there anyone who would like to speak before city council that's on any topic that might be on your mind? Anybody interested in coming down? Yes, back row there. This kid looks kind of familiar.
I think he's had some other complaints.
I'm the guy who proposed that they build a roller coaster.
You pull your, pull the speaker down.
Name and address. Name and address.
My name is Henry Bergstresser. I live at 786 Stanbridge Drive.
Welcome.
I propose that at the city council, please, extend Adventure Reef's water slide selection.
Hmm, okay. I agree with this kid. How do you want to extend it?
Like add more, or...
More hours?
Huh? No.
More water slides?
Yeah, more water slides.
Okay. Do you have a favorite one right now?
Uh, I really like that blue one.
The blue one?
Yeah.
The blue one is absolutely the best.
You want a bigger one?
Yeah.
A bigger one? Okay. We will take that under advisement.
Thank you.
I know just the person I'll ask. Well-trained. In case you haven't caught on, his father's sitting right over there. Raise your hand. Come on, who are you?
You better own him.
Mr. Bergstresser. Thank you very much. You did a great job. Okay, anybody else? Okay. All right. I'd like to call on Mrs. Fisher to be the first person to give an update.
There has been a lot going on, and, and I will just say, it's been a great, it's been great since the 3rd of July. I'm not going to go into details. I will mention one thing. I did bring a couple of our visitors to the 30th Annual The View Juried Landscape Exhibition. That's up at our Rosewood. They are, there's a great exhibition up there, and they're looking for the People's Choice Award. So you need to look at what's on the walls and make a judgment. And I went by myself, made a judgment, brought some folks. Relooking at them the second time, I wanted to revote. So that's what I would share as my report this time.
Thank you, Jackie.
I just wanted to compliment the park staff for the 4th of July. Were you guys at the Delco 4th of July, Kettering's 4th of July fireworks? It was incredible. My daughters loved it, and my whole family loved it. It was amazing. But I went on the 5th up to Delco, and it didn't look quite as nice. There was a lot of trash, so there was over 40 people, staff and volunteers, that went up there, and about an hour, we were able to clean up that whole place. So and a lot of people pitched in to do good work. I couldn't believe, when I drove up, I thought it looked like a wasteland, and an hour later, it looked prettier than before. So that's all for me.
Thanks, Jean. Mrs. Hall?
Yes. I am very excited that we have a drive-through coffee place now in west Kettering. And Big B Coffee Open, and it's one of the handful of restaurants that's opened lately and speaks to the great work of Amy, who is leaving us. This was her last meeting today, and she's done an amazing job as the Economic Development Director here in Kettering, and she'll be missed. But unsurprising, she's graduating to bigger and better things. And also, just wanted to say, you know, it remains hot, and my, I have a son who overheats quickly and can get sick in the heat, and to just ask people to keep an eye on their neighbors during the heat this summer, especially the elderly and kids who can really be affected by strong heat. And lastly, I was thinking about today that it's only a month left until school starts, and really grateful for our Kettering public school teachers, and hope everyone's getting a good rest and adequate summer, and pretty soon it's going to be over. That's it for me.
Thank you.
I'll be brief. I want to add to Mr. Sullivan's comment about the Go4 celebration. Hats off to the, to the planning for that. The food trucks were great, and I've been going to that event for a number of years, and to me, it was the largest crowd I've ever seen there. The place was packed. So job well done, and I think it's a great event for the city. And in addition to the food trucks, my usual reminder, we've got a lot of service providers and retail establishments in Kettering, so please shop Kettering.
I want to start by echoing everyone's thoughts on Go4. That was wonderful. The drone show was a wonderful addition, and everyone seemed to love it. So great job to our Parks Department. I just want to give a quick little update about the Leadership Academy. We are in the middle of interviews for this year's class. We have this, a great range of people who are interviewing, and we're really excited about the, the new crop of people that we're seeing come in. And I'm also excited to announce, and I won't name names till everything's totally official, but we have reformed the Kettering Leadership Board of Directors. We're starting that process, and we're so excited about that. We're going to do a lot of great things. Just two more things, I promise I'm going to be quick. I want to thank Chief Protsman and the Police Department for their support of the Crisis Intervention Program. I have friends who have personally benefited from that and it's just wonderful and I'm so glad it's there. Also, I want to send a little congratulations out to our very own Bruce Duke, former council member, who is the grand marshal for this year's Holiday at Home Parade. So, I think we're all going to be excited to see Bruce out there. So, that's all I have.
So, a few things. One, welcome again to the students from Steyer. One of my favorite authors is Mark Twain and one of my favorite quotes by Mark Twain is when Mark Twain said, "Travel is fatal to prejudice, bigotry, and narrow-mindedness." And it's something that young people would take time to travel halfway around the world to our fair city to spend time. So, thank you for absorbing what we call home and that you're always welcome here and it's really neat to see you guys here tonight. My high schoolers were not thinking about going to Europe to learn about other students, so it's really just encouraging to see you guys here, so thanks for being here. And I carry that, that Twain quote with you, if you will. Also, while shopping in Kettering last week, as I'm apt to do, I picked up a copy of the newest Kettering Times News with my friend, the mayor, on the cover. So, she actually has a copy of it as well. So, if you guys remember, it's just been a couple of months since the publisher, or actually volunteer, was here to talk about bringing free community paper back to our city and that has happened. It's going to come out weekly on Thursdays. I found this at Town and Country, encourage you Thursday to, maybe if you're around Town and Country, look for your copy.
Where at Town and Country did you find it?
This I took from a guy off a bench.
Oh, okay.
I'm kidding, I'm kidding. There's a whole stack on the bench where I was sitting, so they're there at a few spots at Town and Country. And finally, last week, I had the privilege of traveling to Kenosha, Wisconsin, beautiful city in Wisconsin, to attend the Braver Angels National Convention with the mayor. And the Braver Angels is a national organization that exists solely to elevate the civil discourse between people of opposite political parties and how to promote relationship and friendship over political division. And it was an interesting three days of learning on a beautiful college campus at Carthage and excited just for the contacts that we were able to make there with other folks in the community who are interested and committed to elevating the civil discourse in our community on topics that are usually very divisive. So, thank you for the invite to be a part of that convention and just look for new things that come in the community around the Braver Angels movement in months to come.
Thanks, Brian. And if I wait long enough, which I always do, when they all get to go first, they've left me nothing to say. I just will add, once again, kudos to the whole staff for the work on the 4th of July. It's great. Bravers Angels Convention in Kenosha, which really is, I mean, it's beautiful. It sits high on a bluff overlooking Lake Michigan and felt like I was in the Caribbean or something. But it was very needed at this particular time where we have so much contention and anger and stuff. And I think one of the things it did for me too was to really open the, my eyes to the importance. I was aware of it, but didn't feel it so much, the importance of knowing what's going on around the world. So, I've kind of changed my TV viewing habits and I've started watching BBC instead of some of the other stations that'll go unnamed. And I'm finding, you know, I know all about the elections in France and Germany and Britain and, you know, it's kind of neat, kind of neat to do. So, if anyone wants a recommendation, I guess it's okay to plug BBC. It's okay. If anyone wants to know anything more about Braver Angels, please feel free to give me a call and I can talk to you about it a bit more and Brian's probably the same. We are going to try to bring some activities to the community. Don't know what that's going to look like at this point, but that's on our game plan. That's about all I have for this evening. Our next regularly scheduled meeting for city council is July 23rd, 2024, and this meeting is now adjourned.